Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints, and it connects volunteers with community service opportunities. And we have enjoyed volunteering and having the Mayor's Day of Service for the past many years in Parker, and really assisting the Parks and Rec in cleaning up the trails. And that takes a lot of work. So I did enjoy that with my son, John, and he was great at picking up those sticks. It was still a little under the weather from a medical thing, but I enjoyed seeing everybody out there. I did also go to the Douglas County Homeless Initiative Executive Meeting. In fact, things are going so well with reducing the homeless population here through that committee, which I'm a part of here in Douglas County, that they are reducing their meetings right now to six times a year from 12, because we are, they have made significant progress in this area in Douglas County over the past couple of years, under the leadership of Commissioner A. Bladen and a whole host of team members in the community there in Douglas County. The focus was on mental illness at this meeting in nonprofit organizations that help people with mental illness matters. We did go to the Big Picture Meeting under the leadership of Michelle Kivela, our town manager, where many directors were present and had many shout-outs for the fabulous work that the Town of Parker Directors and Staff do. And we did go to the Salisbury Regional Park Groundbreaking today, which our mayor will talk about. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. Yeah, there's a lot. I think it's important to note before I get started here how much this council does outside of this, you know, this, this job right here. There is, there is a lot on their plates. There's a lot of time that is invested into this community regionally and locally for different boards and commissions, and I appreciate this council every day. And we'll take you back to the sixth, Saturday before last, the Mayor's Day of Service. What an outstanding event. Just amazing to see smiling faces at 9:00 AM that just want to get dirty and get to work. And it truly was, it went by, I was there, I think, three hours, and it went by quick. The next thing I knew, it was noon, and I had to get to the horse park. But it was, it was great. I just, I was amazed at how many people came. That, what I found out fascinating was, I mean, there was definitely trash, but not as much as I expected. It was the tinder, the, it was the wood that was, that was cleaned out of the creek and out of the brush there that was amazing, as John said, just piles upon piles of firewood. I know last year, town had to hire some, some extra hours to get some of that stuff out of there, so I know this year is going to be just the same. They're definitely have to get some work. And I know we went north of the line, so Arapahoe County is in for some surprises, too. They got some firewood they got to pick up. But just an amazing job. It was, I walked the whole route. I walked up on the east side and came back down on the west side and, and just took pictures of all the, the firewood and whatnot that was gathered, and just makes us safer. And, and I, I enjoyed it just in that walk. I saw redtail, I saw blue jay, we saw beavers. You know, don't, don't take for granted what we've got running through the midst of our community. You know, Cherry Creek is, is an incredible asset, you know, as is Talmud, as is sulfur, as is lemon. I mean, just some amazing open spaces, if you will. And if we take care of them, and we continue to do what we're doing, they're going to be here for a long time. So thank you to Just Serve. Thank you to the LDS Church. You guys are amazing. And it is open to everybody. So please, I know that, you know, Mayor Toborg prior to me and Just Serve got this going, but we want to make it bigger and bigger and bigger every year. So thank you so much, and I look forward, forward to next year. Next up, I had the Big Picture Meeting on, oh, I'm sorry, Tuesday. We had the employee food truck. We do a little employee, I don't know what you want to call them, what do we call them?
Employee appreciation.
Appreciation. And, and this one is a food truck over at Salisbury Park. So it was nice to sit out in the blazing sun and eat incredible grilled cheese with the, with the, with the team, and a great day over there. And then Wednesday, we had Big Picture. We had two, one in the morning, one in the afternoon. Thursday, the Town of Parker hosted the Cherry Creek Basin Watershed Conference. So every bit of water that is in our valley here ends up in the reservoir, and we have a conference about everything, from the public process to preservation, to, you know, uses. And it was an all-day conference. It was a pleasure to sit in all day, hosted by the Cherry Creek Stewardship. And then Friday, I had CML. I am pleased to announce that going forward for CML, we have an executive board, 21 of us representing 270 communities making decisions. But there's a referral board to that executive board called the Policy Committee. And that Policy Committee is all of the 270 communities on a huge Zoom call. And in the future, that will be chaired by myself. I am a board member, executive board member, and the executive board decided that they would like an executive liaison to that board. And the best way for them to do that was to put one of their own as the chair, as a, as a non-voting member of that policy committee. So from here on out, I will chair the Policy Committee and ensure that the direction of the Policy Committee, the recommendation of the Policy Committee is correctly referenced back to the board, so they know where the decisions were made and, and what, what they want to do for positions on, on future legislative issues. And then on today was the Salisbury Groundbreaking. This is a long time coming. Back in 1989, I, I look at Salisbury Regional Park, as it will be known. It's a timeline of Parker. If you look at the southern edge, it's equestrian. There's an arena, there's some stables, there's some grandstands, there's a polo field. That was the history of Parker. That's why my family came here, was for horses. And then you move a little bit north, and we got some ball fields. And so that's kind of where Parker went, right? The bedroom community. And, and, you know, we need ball fields for our kids to play baseball on and softball on. And then now, we're putting in the last phase to, to make that truly our central park. And today was the groundbreaking for that last phase, for the northern 91 acres to go forward for the next four years, to create a true central park to our community. And it's going to have everything, from a vent lawn, to lighted multi-use fields to answer soccer, lacrosse, flag football. Football needs four more diamonds, well, eight diamonds total, the only, the first, and only in Douglas County so far, will be able to host tournaments. It's going to be incredible. And then BMX pump track, more cyclocross tracks for BMX, 21 pickleball courts. Yeah, I see Glenn's happy. And a couple tennis courts, professional, and a, what is, what's the word, championship court, where grandstands on that. Just an incredible, an incredible playground. It's going to be an incredible asset to our community. Very appreciative of the partnership that went into this, the work, first of all, that went done by our team presenting to the county. We were awarded our share back, and rightfully so. And then we also went for an additional grant to the county. Last week, the county granted us the additional 7.5 million, and that was implemented into our funding, and that will allow us to short-phase, Phase 1 and 2. So we're very, very happy about that and moving right along. So going from five years to four years in completion. So outstanding day-to-day, long time coming, too many people to name, previous councils that were involved in this, previous directors that were involved in this. But biggest shout-out to Mary Colton and her team at Parks and Rec. A job well done. Thank you all. Next, moving on, we have Consent Agenda. Consent Agenda items are considered to be routine and will be enacted with one motion and one vote. There will be no separate discussion of consent agenda items unless council votes to remove an item for individual discussion. Ordinance on the Consent Agenda are for introduction only and cannot and will not be removed for discussion. Council in front of you are Consent Agendas, Item 4A through 4G. I would entertain a motion.
I move through previous consent agenda.
Items 4A through 4G.
Yes, 4A, 4A, 4G.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I'll second.
I have a motion from Hendricks and a second from Barrington. Hendricks, how do you vote?
Yes.
Barrington?
Yes.
Wilks?
Aye.
Dack?
Yes.
Hefta?
Yes.
And Consent Agenda passes unanimously. Next in front of you, Public Hearings, Item 5. Item 5A, Cherry Creek South Metropolitan Districts, numbers 4 through 11. Jamie Nguyen will be presenting, and I'm going to take a minute here and read 16 items into the record, so bear with me. Let me take a drink of water before I get started.
It's going to take you a minute.
Council in front of you, Item 5A1, Resolution Number 25-059, a resolution to approve the Second Amended and Restated Service Plan for the Cherry Creek Metropolitan District Number 4. Item 5A2, Ordinance Number 9.309.2 on second reading, a bill for an ordinance to approve the Second Amendment to the amended and restated intergovernmental agreement by and between the Town of Parker and the Cherry Creek South Metropolitan District Number 4. Item 5A3, Resolution Number 25-060, a resolution to approve the Second Amended and Restated Service Plan for the Cherry Creek South Metropolitan District Number 5. Item 5A4, Ordinance Number 9.310.1 on second reading, a bill for an ordinance to approve the First Amendment to the amended and restated intergovernmental agreement by and between the Town of Parker and the Cherry Creek South Metropolitan District Number 5. Resolution 5A1, Resolution Number 25-061, a resolution to approve the Second Amended and Restated Service Plan for the Cherry Creek South Metropolitan District Number 6. Item Number 5A6, Ordinance Number 9.311.1 on second reading, a bill for an ordinance to approve the First Amended Amendment to the amended and restated intergovernmental agreement by and between the Town of Parker and the Cherry Creek South Metropolitan District Number 6. Item 5A7, Resolution 25-062, a resolution to approve the Second Amended and Restated Service Plan for the Cherry Creek South Metropolitan District Number 7. Item Number 5A8, Ordinance Number 9.312.1 on second reading, a bill for an ordinance to approve the First Amendment to the amended and restated intergovernmental agreement by and between the Town of Parker and the Cherry Creek South Metropolitan District Number 7. Item 5A9, Resolution Number 25-063, a resolution to approve the Second Amended and Restated Service Plan for the Cherry Creek South Metropolitan District Number 8. Item 5A10, sorry, Ordinance Number 9.313.1 on second reading, a bill for an ordinance to approve the First Amendment to the amended and restated intergovernmental agreement by and between the Town of Parker and the Cherry Creek South Metropolitan District Number 8. Item 5A11, Resolution Number 25-064, a resolution to approve the Second Amended and Restated Service Plan for Cherry Creek South Metropolitan District Number 9. Number 5, Item Number 5A12, Ordinance Number 9.314.1 on second reading, a bill for an ordinance to approve the First Amendment to the amended and restated intergovernmental agreement by and between the Town of Parker and Cherry Creek South Metropolitan District Number 9. Item Number 5A13, Resolution Number 25-065, a resolution to approve the Second and amended restated service plan for the Cherry Creek South Metropolitan District Number 10. Item Number 5A14, Ordinance Number 9.315.1, second reading, a bill for an ordinance to approve the First Amendment to the amended and restated intergovernmental agreement by and between the Town of Parker and the Cherry Creek South Metropolitan District Number 10. Item Number 5A15, Resolution Number 25-066, a resolution to approve the Second Amended and Restated Service Plan for the Cherry Creek South Metropolitan District Number 11. And lastly, Item Number 5A16, Ordinance Number 9.316.1 on second reading, a bill for an ordinance to approve the First Amendment to the amended and restated intergovernmental agreement by and between the Town of Parker and the Cherry Creek South Metropolitan District Number 11. Ms. Jamie Nguyen, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Town Council. We have before you tonight eight different amendments, well, eight different metropolitan district amendments. The applicant submitted the application. In part, the amended service plans are updating to comply with our current model service plan. However, the primary modifications being sought by the applicant are to remove the code requirement for a homeowners' association. We do have the applicant here, and they will be giving a presentation as well, but at this time, we are going through some background regarding the requested amendments. Most of these are first amendments to the IGAs. There is one IGA that's a second amendment. The Cherry Creek South Metropolitan Districts have been through a number of different variations in the town since they first commenced, including being separated out and doing a number of different things for this development. With respect to the requests coming before you tonight, they are seeking to remove the requirement to have the homeowners' association for certain things, including covenant enforcement, trash removal, and design review, among other things. Parker Town Code, Section 13.08.140A, requires a creation of a homeowners' association for all residential communities within the Town of Parker. This is an absolute requirement in our code. It is also a requirement that is included in the town's model service plan. If you refer to the Land Development Ordinance, which is 13.03.040Y subsection 2, there are specific requirements for criteria as when an applicant is seeking a waiver to any of the provisions of the Land Development Ordinance, which also includes the model service plan. The specific criteria for the waivers are that council, in making its decision, must enter a resolution. And the resolution for the waiver must find that there is a need for the requested waiver that is not a self-created hardship, and the waiver itself does not impair the intent or purposes of the LDO or the Land Development Ordinance. Because the code and the model service plan does require a homeowners' association, and there is, the intent of the LDO requires a homeowners' association to be provided for all of our residential communities, the removal of a homeowners' association is a self-created condition by removing it to seek the terms and conditions under the, under the metropolitan district. The application was submitted for eight different metropolitan districts for council to decide. The amendments were presented to council and are included in this packet, which, we apologize, it's about 1,800 pages total, that was presented to council tonight. I know you all read every word. But it does go through all of the modifications. As previously stated, when an amendment is sought for the model service plan, you are required to comply with what is currently in place. So some of those provisions are in there. We are not sure at this point what the application is seeking. We do have our Metropolitan District Special Counsel here, Kim Crawford, who is here to provide a little bit of additional information, and then Ms. Crawford and I can answer any questions that council has for staff.
Excellent. Let me invite Ms. Crawford up to the podium, please. And please notice the flowers.
Hi, Kim Crawford. Thank you for having me tonight. And I think Jamie pretty much said it all with all of the service plans. The town has a model service plan. Anytime we see a model service, or a metro district apply for creation of a service plan, we, or a metro district, we check the model service plan to make sure that there's compliance. In these situations, there were a number of provisions that did comply. They, they want to impose some other additional fees that the town could consider. They are requesting that they be allowed to form special improvement districts, which is a special assessment unit. And that's also, the model service plan has been updated to include those provisions. So there are some things that they are asking for that are clearly within the scope of the model service plan. However, it appears that most of the provisions with increasing fees and different types of things are to provide the services that the model service plan currently does not contemplate. Again, it isn't that you can't do it, it's just that it isn't, hasn't been your policy. And in order to do that, it wouldn't be just a deviation for this metropolitan district. It would be changing several sections of your code to comply with this deviation. So I think that is really what it boils down to. There are certainly things that are amenable to your model service plan and things that don't strictly comply.
And, and follow-up to Ms. Crawford's statements, because we would have to amend our code, certain requests at this time would be unlawful based on the language of our code, which require them. So while council could do it, council would need to go through an entire process first to even be able to consider the provisions that are in conflict with our code, because it is unlawful to enter these provisions based on the current language of our code. So at this time, we would not be able to potentially move forward on those unlawful provisions without a modification to our entire code and model service plan first.
And based on those two criteria that you stated regarding a waiver?
Correct.
Right. Council, questions for staff, please. Laura, would you like to start?
So the applicant submits an application, and in the way the application was submitted, was there any ability to delineate between what was in compliance with the model service plan and what wasn't? And could you explain that a little?
We, we did. We, we certainly, whenever we get a, a proposed service plan from a metro district, it's as simple as just blacklining it to the model service plan and identifying what things match and what things don't, asking the applicant why they're requesting things that don't comply, just so that we can get an idea of really of what the, what the intent is, what the purposes are. Some things are, might be okay, because they aren't what we would consider probably a substantial deviation. And some things are a little bit different, like sometimes the metro districts don't have to impose your city, your town mill levies, or your, your capital mill levies because of different circumstances, or your regional levies because you're, because of just the circumstances of what's going on in, in the town. So some of those deviations are certainly authorized and allowed. This one is just kind of, goes to the core of a lot of the town policies with requiring homeowners' associations. And it, it isn't just the model service plan, it's, you know, two other provisions of your code as well, that the town has, has in the past determined that that is something that they wanted and that was important to the town, and so that that's, that's how your model, your code reads.
Thank you.
Eric, questions?
Ms. Crawford, can you, are there other examples of other properties or, I guess, developers seeking the same kind of code requirement or removal of, of this code requirement for homeowners' associations?
Just in Parker?
Correct.
Not to my knowledge.
I'm trying to think if there's been specific ones that have raised this issue before. I know the issue's been discussed a number of times over the years. It may have been, well, with this metropolitan district.
And I think you do have a couple homeowner, a couple metro districts that don't have HOAs, because at one point, there was what was determined to be kind of a loophole that was closed in the town's policies. So those might have been.
There's, there's one development that does not, there, well, there's one of the current developments that found a loophole years ago, and that was corrected by town staff.
1998 or something like that, was it?
And, and when was that loophole closed?
A couple decades ago. I think Alder Village is the only one in one of the metro districts. The town's gone through phases where we did not allow metro districts at all. So once metro districts came in, the homeowners' association was required, there was a loophole in the drafting of our code at the time, and that one development found that loophole, which once town staff was aware of it and based on council direction, that loophole was closed.
So is it safe to say that most other developments that have happened in the Town of Parker have all had a homeowners' association?
They all have the legal requirement to have one. There are times that staff has needed to follow up.
Thank you.
Mr. Dack, please.
Thank you. So to kind of clean, clean this up, or to try to create context, you know, if this, if this HOA metro district issue, in order to kind of make it cleaner, it would probably make sense to create the legislative resolution first, and then sort of come back and, and address, address this, if, if that's what the will of council is. Is that a fair statement?
The resolution itself wouldn't solve the issue. It would have to be an ordinance amending our code, because the resolution, the way that the resolution has those legal requirements, it can't be in violation of the LDO. So the code would have to be amended by ordinance first, and then council could come back and potentially find that resolution if it fit the criteria.
But if it's, if, if we don't go through a process such as that, then we are at the waiver process, which you have, that the, the two criteria that was outlined, correct, to kind of consider? Is that what?
The waiver process, correct. There's the two criteria to consider under the waiver process, if it were not already in violation of code.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Wilks, questions for staff?
So to John's point, if we went down that path of doing an ordinance to amend the code, what kind of general repercussions are we looking at for both past developments and future developments in the town?
A lot of that would come into discussion with council and executive session. There would be a lot of things to consider, whether or not things are retroactive perspective, and how we handle any potential issues that come up, depending on how council decides to handle it.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Barrington, please.
I think you asked some of the same questions that I had, so thank you.
Mr. Hendricks, please.
Same.
With that, I'd like to invite up the applicant. I understand you have a PowerPoint, Mr. Elliott.
There are flowers there, too, as well.
For me?
Just to let you know.
[laughing]
Thank you all very much. Chris Elliott, on behalf of the Cherry Creek South Districts, 4 through 11. I would initially say that I'm really excited to see you all after having seen you when we, oh, what'd I do? At the ribbon-cutting for Chambers. Exciting time. It's exciting roadway. I understand that you can see it from the moon. I just initially wanted to stand up and, and indicate that this has been an issue that has been important to us. It involves the Tantera community, Tantera community being one of, if not the last big major infill mixed-use community in the Town of Parker. And this isn't something that benefits the developer. It's something that actually has no economic issues or value to us as developer, but it does create some great opportunities for the residents that live there or will live there. And that's why it's so important to us. We think that this is something that is used extensively throughout Colorado. In fact, the state legislature has made a number of refinements to make this particular process even easier to use by local communities. And I would say, I would dare that every community that we work in, and we work in a lot of them in the, along the Front Range, have this as a method that's used for the management of the community. So with that, I would like to turn it over to Megan Murphy, who's going to give you the outline of the things that we're asking. And then I'll get back up and finish it off.
Thank you, Chris. Ms. Murphy, if you could state your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you. Megan Murphy, 2154 East Commons Avenue, Suite 2000, Centennial 80122. Good evening, council, mayor.
Good evening.
We have quite a detailed presentation, but I don't want to get lost in the weeds, so I want to start out with kind of an overview of what our request is. Then I've got two folks who are going to come up and give testimony. One's a homeowner in the Trails at Crowfoot community in Parker, and one's a home builder in the Tantera project. And then we'll get back to the weeds if that's where you want to go, but I think this will be a little bit more helpful. Okay, this is the site just south of your new Salisbury Regional Park. Can't wait to see that come online. Here's a map of the districts. I know it's a little bit hard to see. Hopefully, it's closer in your packet, and you can see. We are talking about all of the districts, so 4 through 11. These four sub-bullet points under the bold are the, kind of the high-level items. So we're talking about districts providing O&M operations and maintenance services, including trash, covenant enforcement and design review services, imposing fees to pay for those services. As you know, your model service plan has an O&M mill levy cap, so if the districts aren't allowed to impose fees, and they don't have any way to pay for the services under the cap, we're left in a bit of a tough spot. So providing services goes with paying for those services. So those are grouped together, I'll call them in kind of one request, the first three items. We're going to provide services, we're going to pay for them through the use of fees. And then the final bullet point is special assessment, special improvement districts, which Ms. Crawford talked about earlier. That's kind of a standalone request that you can grant as part of the approval. So I just want to start with an example of the Trails at Crowfoot Master Owners Association. They're a very similarly large project in the Town of Parker. They were required to have an HOA created, because your town model service plan does not allow the districts to provide these services. Based on a draft 2026 budget, the association, just in admin costs, so I'm not talking snow removal, landscaping, I'm talking just admin, overhead, management, mailing, et cetera, costs, are projected to be $83,120 for 2026. So had that community been able to not have an HOA and just have the metro district provide those services, that would be approximately a savings of $93 per home per year. Now, I know that doesn't seem like a lot, but I have a resident from that community here to talk to you about whether that might seem or not seem like a lot. So with that, I will invite Doug up to the podium to talk to you about that. I'll be back.
Thank you. Mr. Doug, if you could also state your name and address for the record, sir.
Absolutely. My name is Doug Townsend. I live at 17123 Hop Clover Avenue in Parker, 80134. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. Again, my name is Doug Townsend. I'm a CPA by training. I'm a Chief Financial Officer by profession, and I'm a member of the Board of Directors of the Trails at Crowfoot HOA. I do want to mention, though, that I'm here as a homeowner and not as a representative of that board in this presentation. I believe two goals of any government or quasi-governmental entity should be efficiency and transparency. The layering of the Trails at Crowfoot HOA on top of the Trails at Crowfoot, Metro District 3, does not contribute either to efficiency or transparency. Indeed, it actually hurts both. A homeowner in Trails pays $1,200 per year in HOA fees for a single-family home. Because the district can't impose the fees. Because the district can't impose fees directly on the homeowners under the current plan, the HOA is required to transfer funds to pay the maintenance costs for the community improvements that the district owns. The HOA can't own those because they're public improvements. Based upon our 2025 budget for the HOA, 93% or $1,116.87 of that assessment will be transferred to the metro district. That leaves $83.13 for the HOA. Now, out of that $83, 56.5% of that goes to, in essence, administrative costs, the management fees for the management company, state filings, tax filings, bank accounts, those types of things, insurance costs. Individually, each one of those line items may look like it's a reasonable cost and they're necessary, you know, for legal reasons, for good management reasons, but clearly the small amount remaining after the HOA allocates those funds to the district and pays for the administrative costs, it really allows the HOA to do virtually nothing on behalf of the homeowners. Very little value add there. The duplication of the administrative functions and costs, management, insurance, mailings, bank fees, et cetera, represent wasted money with only very marginal value add to the actual delivery of services to the homeowners. It is not efficient when the duplicated costs exceed the dollars spent on the homeowner's behalf. The shifting of the 93% of the total HOA assessments to the district essentially obliterates the transparency of our HOA budget. Those individual line items do not show up in our budget when we present that to the homeowners. When a homeowner has concerns about parks, the pool, snow removal, or any number of other issues, they call the HOA, only to be referred to the district for the actual answer. When a homeowner complains about their assessments and what they perceive to be very little value they receive from the HOA, they complain to the HOA management and the board. The fact is, they pay their assessments to the HOA and most homeowners struggle to understand the concept as to why the HOA then defers to the district for answers to all of those questions that they have as to what's really going on in the neighborhood. The current layering of the metro district and HOA hides the actual tax burden on the homeowners by shifting a substantial portion of that metro district revenue to the HOA. In my personal case, the district represents 52% of the total mill levy on my home's property taxes, yet a full 20.5% of the taxes that I pay for the metro district are hidden as HOA assessments. That is not transparency. This is not a criticism of either the metro district or the HOA. It's simply an illustration of the inefficiency and the lack of transparency that exists with the current structuring. I ask the council to work to reduce or eliminate these inefficiencies and to increase transparency as you consider future intergovernmental agreements between the town of Parker, additional metro districts, and future developments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, me again, but just briefly. Now I'm going to call in a builder, Chad from TruMark Homes, to talk to you about this proposed change.
Thank you. Chad, good to see you. If you would, please state your name and address for the record, sir.
Chad Rodriguez, 8350 East Crescent Parkway, Suite 450, Greenwood Village, Colorado, 80111. Mayor and council members, thanks for the opportunity to come up here tonight to talk about it. We, as a builder, are heavily invested in Tantera and will continue to be invested in Tantera. At the end of the day, we want what is best for our homeowners. And I sat up here and listened to the presentations and they followed what the code says. Is status quo always what we want? That's what we used to do. If we all did that, we would never progress. Salisbury Park would still be an equestrian park, a little one on the south end. It's called progress. It's called efficiency. We want the best for our homeowners, transparency. They ask our salespeople, what are all these figures? What are we paying for? What are we getting? Why shouldn't we have the transparency to allow for that? Why should we have double government on a community with an HOA and a metro district? It doesn't make logical sense in my mind. I don't think it's the best for the homeowner. At the end of the day, the board will be populated by homeowners, the metro district board that holds official elections. You don't get as much cronyism that you get in HOAs that have been around for 30 years because there's usually only two to three people maximum that want to sit on that board. And it becomes, I've been around it for many years, often it's not what you wanted it to be. And also, you have to file and collect those fees, whether it's monthly, it's quarterly for the HOA. And then when they don't pay, a whole bunch of legal action takes place. With the metro district, it's easier to move forward. It becomes a lien quickly, this part of their property tax that allows it to move forward and make sure it's funded. So the public improvements that are in the community where the people live stay maintained to a high level and protects their property values. But at the end of the day, the biggest thing I heard tonight is we can't do it because we never have before. That doesn't seem like a good answer to me. We had to evaluate it and move forward with what's efficient for the future residents of Parker. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
I don't know you very well, but you look like you might have a question. Or do you want me to keep going?
No, finish yours and then we'll go to questions. But yes, I do. Thank you.
Okay, great.
Good read.
Yes.
Must be a litigator.
No, not at all. No, no, very gentle. So the rest of the presentation goes into great detail about the changes we're not requesting and the changes we are. I want to say at a high level that we perhaps have a disagreement on the legal team for the districts compared to the legal team for the town about how we can accomplish this request tonight, and I'm not here to nitpick through that with you or anyone else. If it's council's desire to approve this request, a lot of lawyers can get in a room and figure out how to make that happen. I have no doubt about that. But I do want you to know that you have more than just a choice of approving without subject changes to the model or disapproving. I think your town code allows you to conditionally approve, allows you to continue this hearing, and allows you to do a lot of things in between, right? You're the town council. You have approval of the service plan under the town code. The applicant in this context is the districts. The applicant in the land development code is not the districts, so we have a little bit of a confusion between the defined term applicant, right? Districts don't submit plaids, they don't submit PUDs, you don't see us here for SIAs, you just see us here for service plans. So I just want to present the perspective that I think we can get where we want to go if that's where you want to go, and it's my job to get you to want to go there. So I'm ready for questions.
Thank you. Council will open up for questions. Todd, would you like to start us, please? Okay. Andy, have questions, please?
I'll save them. Thanks, I'm good.
Brandy?
Save them for what? I'm confused. Am I missing a step? Okay, so since a waiver would require a formal resolution by the council prior to this conversation happening, I am curious what resolution you are relying on because we're missing a big step.
Yeah, so I think there's sections of your town code that allow you to approve service plans, but I think the person you really want to answer that question is your town attorney. Or you want me to keep going?
No, you can direct it to the town attorney, or you can do whatever you want.
Well, not whatever I want, you know?
No, no.
He's talking to me. Okay. I can do what I want.
You can actually lower the whole microphone down.
Yeah, it tilts all the way down, too.
I'm unlikely to get taller tonight, so this is good.
No, you're good.
Okay, so Section 1011140A says that the town's proposed service plan is substantially to comply with the model service plan. And I think we heard some examples from Ms. Crawford about times when you haven't strictly followed the model service plan. So just as a threshold issue, I don't think your town code requires strict adherence to your model service plan. I think substantial compliance is required. Now, we can debate what is substantial compliance, but already come with me to the land where we don't have to follow the text of the model code exactly. Now, once we're in that land, we go further down in the town code that says approval or disapproval of the service plan is governed by Section 10.11.230, which says this chapter, meaning 10.1 of the code, not the land development code. So I'm not even in the land development code at all because there's no mention of metro districts in the land development code, to my knowledge, shall govern the processing, review, and consideration of service plans. So if we just stay in the town code, Chapter 10, I think you have the ability to approve these service plans. Now, again, I'm not here to talk about the land development code and the applicant that's the land developer. That's a different process. But does that answer your question, council member?
I mean, it gives me your perspective on-
Yeah, of course, of course. All I can provide.
Okay, can I ask another one? Your second person who did their testimony, I'm sorry, I don't know your name exactly, but-
Chad Rodriguez.
Thank you. You had mentioned the property values and how it would actually be good for property values if homeowners just had the metro district and it gives more to that.
Sorry, this gentleman here, the homeowner, I think is who you're referring to.
No, I wrote it down, the second one. But nonetheless, going down that line, just for clarification's sake, if we went down that path and there was no HOA and there's just a metro district, then the community amenities, which many homeowners buy into the community for, including the exclusivity of the pool and exclusivity of a clubhouse and that type of things, would be open to public use and not specifically to neighborhood use, correct? Okay, thank you.
Mr. Dyak, sir?
I have, I have no questions right now.
Mr. Franzin, sir?
I was trying to formulate questions as it was coming. So really, the request that you're putting in front of us is to have the metro district effectively act as the HOA but not be an HOA. Is that correct?
Yeah, so those are two different entities under Colorado law. An HOA is a nonprofit corporation. A metro district is a quasi-governmental entity. So the request before you is instead of having two different entities at the Tantera project, we just have the metro district. And the metro district does snow removal, landscaping, trash, covenant enforcement, design review, all of the things that an HOA would traditionally do, including owning the pool and clubhouse and other amenities that are open to the public. And to do all those things, we need a way to pay for it. So that's the request to impose fees.
Could a metro district, so an HOA by state statute is nonprofit, could a metro district be for profit?
We're a tax-exempt governmental entity, so I don't want to say those terms don't really fit, but they don't really fit. We're not corporations under Title VII of the Colorado revised statutes. So we don't make a profit if that's your concern. We're not in the, you know, return on investment, much like the town of Parker, we exist to provide services. I don't know if that helps. It's just kind of a different-
Yeah, no, that does. I appreciate that. That's good clarification. That's all. Questions? Thanks.
Ms. Efta, please.
So the issue in these resolutions, this resolution, this ordinance, could you address the bigger picture of this matter for all HOAs in Parker, to your knowledge, and how this might change all existing HOAs, to your knowledge?
We are not proposing to go back and change any existing communities, including the Trails at Crowfoot community. In a big picture, as simple as I can say it, we're saying, can we join your neighbors like Aurora, Arvada, Thornton, Frederick, Douglas, Fort Collins, Castle Pines, Castle Rock? The list goes on and on, that allow districts to provide O&M services and covenant enforcement services for this specific community. I think if anybody else wanted to make a change, they'd need to come in and amend their service plan at a public hearing, properly notice all of their property owners. So whether that happens in the future or not, I couldn't say, but existing communities are often set up the way they are and pretty entrenched, right? So the HOA owns something, the district owns something, you're paying here, you're paying there. We're saying, based on our experience, both in Parker at Trails and our experience elsewhere, we don't think that's the most efficient and effective way for a community of this size to be set up. So can we do something different here?
I would point out that the one example of a lien as part of a property tax versus an HOA collecting fees through a collection agency does not resolve any matter. If you could explain to me how that resolves things, I don't really think that's a good example. It's still a process. In fact, there's a lien on your home that's public, so I don't think that's a good example. I don't know if you have any other better examples, but I do not see that one as a good example.
Yeah, lawyer to lawyer, I agree with that. Not to throw anyone under any vehicles. You make a fair point there. I think what the gentleman was getting at is more transparency. Instead of having two different layers of an HOA in a district, paying quarterly, monthly fees to the HOA, annual property taxes in your mortgage, call this number, collect this here, I got a notice from you. I think that was the gist of the message, but I don't have anything to dispute your accurate assessment of the process.
Thank you.
Thank you. My questions, if you could. Take me back regarding your statement about paying for services and about the town's five mills, if you will, on OEM. That's collected in the sales tax and then that's remitted to the town for repairs that we're going to need eventually in perpetuity on streets and the like, correct?
I think you, you might be mixing up some concepts, so let me try to come along and we'll see if we get into this in place. So if the metro district were to provide services, your current model service plan has an O&M mill levy cap of five mills for home, less than 400 units, and 10 mills for more than 400 units. I hope that's right. Okay, Kim says she thinks it's right. So we've got that money coming in.
Yes.
Right? No sales tax, not involved with that. On top of that, you have your regional mills that this community is also imposing, that go to you, the town, to pay for regional improvements.
2.62 mills per household.
I think we might be, okay, let's call it 2.26 mills.
Okay.
That's going to stay the same. In that 10 mills, we can only pay for what we can pay for, right, at the district level? So imagine we're providing trash, landscaping, snow removal, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. If 10 mills isn't enough, the district will need the power to impose fees to make up additional revenue. As Doug mentioned, in the Trails at Crowfoot community, the HOA imposes those fees and then passes them through to the district because the district can't directly impose them because of the way your model service plan is. So we're staying, instead of having an HOA impose a fee to give to the district to provide the services, why don't we just have no HOA?
So maybe I am confused. The 5%, the Growth Act for growth was something that we would use to fix our roads, am I correct? And the like? Or is that for them to use to fix? I'm confused there.
There's, there's different types of mills for infrastructure versus operation and maintenance for the metro district. So the initial mills, which I think was one of the examples that Ms. Crawford brought up, that we've considered waiving when a metro district is asking for an amendment when the infrastructure is already in place completely, those mills are different than the normal operation and maintenance mills. There's two different categories.
Okay. So then going to, and you restated it, the way that Trails at Crowfoot is set up, that's not done by our model service plan. That was a decision, the HOA feeds money to the metro district to pay for trash service, whereas in my neighborhood, the HOA pays for trash service. So that's not anything the town imposed, that's simply the structure of that community, correct?
Oh, I see what you're saying. So yeah, we could have done it the other way, but because your town model service plan doesn't allow the district to do it, you have to have both.
Yes.
Because the HOA can't finance the improvements, so the district has to exist already for financing. And then for O&M, you say the HOA has to exist because of the structure of your model service plan. So if Trails just had things through the HOA, we wouldn't have been able to use tax-exempt public financing to build the park, the pool.
No, I understand that. No, I'm talking more about the services. 93%, obviously, that's including trash service, that's including plowing, that's including, you know, other things that I think most communities that are set up with HOAs, that's an HOA issue, whether or not Trails of Crowfoot decided to then make that a metro district issue, even though they already have an HOA, that's up to Trails of Crowfoot. That has nothing to do with this building, am I correct?
I perhaps see it differently, but I'm not trying to- I perhaps see it differently, but I'm not trying to belabor the point.
Okay. Thank you for that. Appreciate that. Counsel, further questions for staff?
For our staff or for...
For whomever.
Okay.
I, I think if you, if you're allowing it, Mr. Elliott might like to have a few closing words.
Yes, please.
Again, Chris Elliott on behalf of the, the metro districts. I think the simplest way to look at this is, if I'm a homeowner in one of these communities, I got to pay the metro district debt, and then there is this whole host of additional things that need to be done. There is a pool, there is a, a pocket park that needs to be maintained, there's, you know, a, a wide variety, I got to pay administrative costs. The way it's set up right now, you have the district paying the debt and doing the maintenance, because it's authorized to do so. And then, but it, because it isn't authorized to generate more in terms of income beyond what is permitted by the O&amp;M portion of the mill levy, they have to rely upon the HOA to impose fees. In any other community, the metro district would actually impose the fees, and the district would take care of all of the maintenance of improvements. Yes, the answer to the swimming pool is, yes, it's a public facility because it's owned by the metro district, as is all of the parks and so forth. There's no private facilities, per se, that belong to the community. But the community has the opportunity to expand those improvements through the, the metro district. There's a public process that is no different than what you all do up here. There is an elected board that serves a term that's four years long, it's staggered, those people have to run, again, just like you all do, and they are elected to serve the position within the community. They abide by the rules and so forth, not only of the, the district, but state law and, and the municipal law. They have an obligation to meet all of those requirements. So from the homeowner's perspective, they want to be able to look at the leanest, easiest way to do it. And there are good HOAs and there are not-so-good HOAs. I would tell you that there's more mischief that's available through the HOA process, and that's the thing that we've seen at the state legislature. They've come back and imposed all sorts of additional standards on HOAs, because, as was suggested, you end up with people who get appointed to that position, there's not term limits, there's not any restrictions on what they can do, and they position themselves in those HOAs. And we've seen it time and time again, where in a, a bad situation, you get people who run that like a fiefdom, and they impose fees that don't necessarily have a nexus to what the actual costs are, and they turn around and use that and, and impose penalties that they get to make up, and then the homeowner is put in a position where they have to pay that, or they have to succumb to the dictates of the HOA in order to survive. In a metro district, you don't have to do that. Everything has to be done in accordance with the rules and regulations, both local, the district, and the state dictate what the, the district can and can't do in terms of imposing requirements. So if I'm a homeowner and I see that I've got all these things, I've got all these benefits that I derive, I would much prefer to know that I have a, a properly elected board that serves the purpose of determining these things, has a budget process that is required to be made public, I have a mill levy process that is required to be done in a public hearing and imposed based upon what it is that makes the most sense for the community, and I have an opportunity at community engagement. I don't have to worry about three or four people who meet behind closed doors and make decisions about what my future may or may not be within my community. You know, we, we all have our stories, we've all heard the stories. I have my own stories, you know, of owning properties within HOAs where the HOA comes back and imposes unreasonable standards, and I don't have a choice but to succumb to that, because that's what they've indicated. The, the, the legislature has gone so far as to dictate how a metro district, when it's acting as an HOA, must conform to KIWA. And I'm sure you're all familiar with that particular law that directs how HOAs function. Well, it says, if you're going to act as the controller of covenants, you're going to be doing other things that have been typically done by an HOA, here's a set of standards that you got to meet in order to do it. And they are imposed, and they are used by the districts to run it. You have the requirement for audits, you have the requirement for compliance, we have reporting requirements back to the, to the town for the metro districts. So there's, as, as Doug indicated, there's a whole host of things that you don't get to see when you're stuck behind an HOA, that you do get to see when you get to work with a metro district. As, as far as the imposition of penalties and so forth, there are whole standards, and you guys have watched the same as we have with what the legislature's done as far as HOAs and what they can impose in terms of requirements for penalties and what they can do as a result of people who failed to pay their dues. You don't have the same problems with a metro district that you do with the HOA, and consequently, you don't have to worry about those bad actors, again, that come in and make imposition of, of fees that make it very difficult for someone who's having a hard time making it work, be able to satisfy the requirements of the HOA. Cost, again, talked about the administrative duplication. You don't have the administrative duplication. We're all concerned about affordability, and, you know, the front page of the Denver Post today is talking about affordability and the fact that fees and so forth that are imposed are not affordable, and that people don't often understand what it is that they're forced to have to deal with. Well, if it comes through a local government, they get to see how it is, they get to participate in how those decisions end up getting made. So, that's my pitch. I think that if the conclusion was that you wanted to embrace this and you came back and told us, well, we need to go through a certain set of steps in order to make sure that we do this in a proper and legal way, in accordance with what the town's attorney's office says, we'll do it. We'll be happy to do it. We don't think that this is a precedent that's being set, we think that this is something that's being considered for one of the last big communities in the town. If others are happy with their HOA, then they should continue to utilize their HOA. And perhaps the opportunity is that when a new community comes along, you have a choice. Is it such that it's small enough that there's no reason for a metro district, and in that case, an HOA ought to be imposed? If it's large enough that there's a metro district, then the developer in, in conjunction with the town staff makes a decision whether or not the metro district ought to serve that function or not, or whether you ought to have a separate HOA. So there's a lot of ways that it can be imposed and a lot of ways that we can make it work. We just think this is a good idea here. And so we're happy to do that. The other thing I would say, and then I'll shut up, is that we're asking really for two different things. One is this opportunity to explore the metro district concept, acting in the capacity of the HOA. And then the separate is allowing us to bring the district service plans into compliance with the recent, recently changed service, model service plan, and allow for special improvement districts, which the town has agreed to in many other communities. We'd like to get that, we'd like to walk away with that for sure. But we'd like to see, allow us to continue this conversation.
Thank you, Chris. I appreciate it. All right. Staff, any other questions? Open up for public comment. Seeing none, I'd like to open public comment at 8:09. If there's any member of the general public wishing to address staff on these specific items, please make yourself known. Seeing none, we'll close public comment at 8:09 and go back from comments and/or debate from, from counsel. Laura, would you like to start us off, please?
I appreciate Mr. Elliott and his folks briefing us on these ideas. Certainly, this is an interesting idea. For me, as a trained lawyer of over 30 years, I'm struggling to get around our code and our model service plan and legally what we're required to do with that in the, in the Town of Parker right now at this point. I think opportunities to explore the metro district is a big, is a very big issue that, that deserves its full due of discourse over a period of time. But I'm certainly, you know, would always want to have district service plans come into compliance with the model code. Those are my thoughts at this point in time.
Thank you. Mr. Franzen, sir.
So I'd echo some of what Councilmember Hefta has said, you know, I think this is a great dialogue and a bigger concept, a bigger issue to, to address, you know, whether, whether it's, it's tonight or later down the road. You know, what, what I am truly struggling with is that, you know, these, these amendments as presented are not consistent with the town's code or the town's model service plan, which, you know, require some, some additional steps if we were to go that direction. You know, I know we, it was outlined, you know, there's, there's effectively two things that Mr. Elliott, you were asking for. It was, was, one, exploring the metro, acting as, as the HOA, and, two, you pushing to, to be compliant with the, the new code or the new service, service plan, probably using the wrong vernacular terminology here, but, you know, I'm certainly in support of the second piece of that. You know, I'm, I'm not prepared to, I guess, fully unpack the metro acting as the HOA at this, at this point.
Mr. Dyak, sir.
So, you know, I think, based on Mr. Elliott's ask, I think number two is, makes sense. I mean, I don't think I have an issue with it, I'm hopeful my fellow council members wouldn't have an issue with it, I don't think they would. The HOA metro district thing has, has come to us a few times. You know, I'm a, I'm a finance guy too, efficient effectiveness, those are my words, tax, you know, tax benefit too, we kind of forgot to throw that in there as well. But, you know, to me, I see, I, I live in an HOA-only community, I don't have a metro district, but talking to people, I, I understand how, how creating synergies could potentially be, be helpful for the overall development. But, but again, I think we're, we're at a point where we need to change our, our code, our ordinances, create a legislative action to make that make sense, to make that be clean. And, you know, I think, you know, I think because we haven't had it, you can probably indicate that there, there really isn't a consensus to, to go down that road at this point in time. But I, I do appreciate the testimony and the words in that, in that activity. I, I largely understand and, and agree with, with some of that. If you can create a more efficient, if you can take two entities, make it one, create efficiencies, it makes sense to kind of explore. But we, we're just, as a town, I don't believe we're there yet. To, to get to a point where we would need to consider something, a waiver, we had two criteria. The need for the requested waiver is not a self-created hardship, the waiver does not impact the intent and purposes of the LDO. And, you know, to me, those are the criteria that we would sort of have to take a look at for, in my opinion, that, that metro district HOA issue. So even though I would, I would be open to continuing the conversation with my fellow council members, I don't think we have the legislative things in place to, to move forward with, with that ask. So I think at this point in time, I will, I will, I will conclude my, my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Dyak.
Yep.
Ms. Wilks, please.
I just like the way you end that conclude. So to my fellow council members' points, you know, should this be something that maybe down the road we need to take a look at again? Maybe, maybe not. But regardless on that, and regardless on whether or not we agree about having an HOA versus a metro district, the point is, the petitioners are effectively seeking a waiver to our LDO by a resolution that doesn't exist. And so entering into that one, it's not permissible by our laws, and by attempting to eliminate the HOA requirement and transfer the authority to a metro district, they, the petitioners have failed to meet the requirements and for the necessary conditions for consideration. So just based on that alone, because it, it had failed to meet those for me, it's something that I can't move forward with on that point right now, because we haven't met the criteria needed to, to effectively say yes on that.
Thank you, Brandy. Ms. Barrington, please.
Yeah, I, I appreciate all your testimony and, and your points, and, and there's a lot that I don't disagree with. And I think that there's a lot of, a lot of this that we, that, you know, it's worth looking into, but I, our hands are tied right now. So I, I think we'd love to get to a yes, but it's just at this point, we'd, we'd be breaking our own law, and it's just... That's all I have right now.
Thank you. Mr. Hendricks, please.
I just agree with my fellow... I just agree with my fellow council members, we're just, we have, we have laws in place and just can't toss it aside, so that's where I'm at.
Thank you, sir. Counsel, with that, I would entertain a motion on Items 5A, 1, and 2, Resolutions Number 25-059, and Ordinance Number 9.309.2 on second reading.
All right. I move to approve the portions of Resolution Number 25-059 and Ordinance Number 9.309.2 on second reading, which are not in conflict with the town's model service plan and Section 13.8.140 of the Parker Land Development Ordinance, which approval is subject to the applicant providing the town's, the town attorney's office with revised, second amended and restated service plan for Cherry Creek South Metropolitan District Number 4 and Second Amendment to amend, to amended and restated intergovernmental agreement by and between the Town of Parker and Cherry Creek South Metropolitan District Number 4 that removes the conflicting amendments and the town attorney's office upon review. The revised draft determines that the conflicting provisions have been removed. Upon such determination, the revised, second amended and restated service plan for Cherry Creek South Metropolitan District Number 4 and Second Amendment to, to amended and restated intergovernmental agreement by and between the Town of Parker and Cherry Creek South Metropolitan District Number 4 will be deemed approved.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion from Mr. Dyak and a second from Ms. Barrington. Todd, how do you vote?
Yes.
Barrington?
Yes.
Wilks?
Hi.
Dyak?
Yes.
Franzen?
Yes.
Hefta?
Yes.
And that passes unanimously. Next in front of you, counsel, I would entertain...
If I may interrupt it, it seems like there wasn't a time that we closed the public hearing stated on the record.
Thank you very much. Let the record show that the public hearing was closed now. Closed at 8:19 PM. Thank you, I will...
That's usually reserved for me, just to let you know, when you're not here.
You're sitting too close to me.
Yeah.
I was going to thank Jamie, but I probably should thank Chris, she's the one that caught that, yeah. All right, with that, counsel, I would entertain a motion for Items 5A, 3, and 4, Resolution Number 25-063, 060, excuse me, and Ordinance Number 9.310.1 on second reading.
All right. I move to approve the portions of Resolution Number 25-060 and Ordinance 9.310.1 on second reading, which are not in conflict with the town's service model plan and Section 13.08.140 of the Parker Land Development Ordinance, which approval is subject to the applicant providing the town's attorney's office with revised, second amended and restated service plan for the Cherry Creek South Metropolitan District Number 5 and First Amendment to the amended and... and First Amendment to the amended and restated intergovernmental agreement by and between the Town of Parker and Cherry Creek South Metropolitan District Number 5 that removes the conflicting amendments and the town attorney's office. Upon review of revised drafts, determines that the conflicting provisions have been removed. And upon such determination, the revised, second amended and restated service plan for Cherry Creek South Metropolitan District Number 5 and First Amendment to amended and restated intergovernmental agreement by and between the Town of Parker and Cherry Creek South Metropolitan District Number 5 will be deemed approved.
Thank you. Do I have a second on Mr. Dyak's motion?
I'll second.
I have a motion from Mr. Dyak and a second from Ms. Barrington. Todd, how do you vote?
Yes.
Barrington?
Yes.
Wilks?
Aye.
Dyak?
Yes.
Franzen?
Yes.
Hefta?
Yes.
And that also passes unanimously. Next, in front of you, counsel, I'd entertain a motion on items 5A5 and 6, resolution number 25-061 and ordinance number 9.311.1 on second reading.
All right. I move to approve the portions of resolution number 25-061 and ordinance number 9.311.1 on second reading, which are not in conflict with the town's model service plan and section 13.08.140 of the Parker Land Development Ordinance, which approval is subject to the applicant providing the town attorney's office with revised Second Amendment and restated service plan for Cherry Creek South Metropolitan District Number 6 and First Amendment and amended and restated intergovernmental agreement by and between the Town of Parker and Cherry Creek South Metropolitan District Number 6 that removes the conflicting amendments from the town attorney's office. Upon review of the revised drafts, determines that the conflicting provisions have been removed. And upon such determination, the revised, second amended and restated service plan for Cherry Creek South Metropolitan District Number 6 and First Amendment to the amended and restated intergovernmental agreement by and between the Town of Parker and Cherry Creek South Metropolitan District Number 6 will be deemed approved.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion from Dyak and a second from Barrington. Todd, how do you vote?
Yes.
Barrington?
Yes.
Wilks?
Aye.
Dyak?
Yes.
Franzen?
Yes.
Hefta?
Yes.
And that also passes unanimously. Next, in front of you, counsel, are items 5A9 and 10, resolution number 25-063 and ordinance number 9.313.1 on second reading.
Did we miss 20? Did we miss?
You skipped district number seven.
Not that I'm complaining or anything, but I did.
Excuse me, sorry about that. Counsel, I'd entertain a motion on items 5A7 and 8, resolution number 25-062 and ordinance number 9.312.1 on second reading.
All right. I move to approve the portions of resolution number 25-062 and ordinance number 9.312.1 on second reading, which are not in conflict with the town model service plan and section 13.08.140 of the Parker Land Development Ordinance, which approval is subject to the applicant providing the town attorney's office with revised, second amended and restated service plan for the Cherry Creek South Metropolitan District Number 7 and First Amendment to amended and restated intergovernmental agreement by and between the Town of Parker and Cherry Creek South Metropolitan District Number 7 that removes the conflicting amendments and the town attorney's office. Upon review of the revised drafts, determines that the conflicting provisions have been removed. And upon such determination, the revised, second amended and restated service plan for the Cherry Creek South Metropolitan District Number 7 and First Amendment and to amended and restated intergovernmental agreement by and between the Town of Parker and Cherry Creek South Metropolitan District Number 7 will be deemed approved.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion from Dyak and a second from Barrington. Hendricks, how do you vote?
Yes.
Barrington?
Yes.
Wilks?
Aye.
Dyak?
Yes.
Franzen?
Yes.
And Hefta?
Yes.
And those also pass unanimously. Next up, finally, just kidding, in front of you, item number 5A9 and 10, resolution number 25-063 and ordinance number 9.313.1 on second reading.
I move to approve the portions of resolution number 21-063 and ordinance number 9.313.1 on second reading, which are not in conflict with the town's service model plan and section 13.08.140 of the Parker Land Development Ordinance, which approval is subject to the applicant providing the town attorney's office with a revised, second amended and restated service plan for the Cherry Creek South Metropolitan District Number 8 and First Amendment to amended and restated intergovernmental agreement by and between the Town of Parker and Cherry Creek South Metropolitan District Number 8 that removes the conflicting amendments and the town attorney's office. Upon review of revised drafts, determines that the conflicting provisions have been removed. And upon such determination, the revised, second amended and restated service plan for the Cherry Creek South Metropolitan District Number 8 and First Amendment to amended and restated intergovernmental agreement by and between the Town of Parker and Cherry Creek South Metropolitan District Number 8 will be deemed approved.
Thank you. Have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion from Mr. Dyak and a second from Ms. Barrington. Hendricks, how do you vote?
Yes.
Barrington?
Yes.
Wilks?
Aye.
Dyak?
Yes.
Franzen?
Yes.
And Hefta?
Yes.
And that also passes unanimously. Next up, in front of you, items 5A11 and 12, resolution number 25-064 and ordinance number 9.314.1 on second reading.
I move to approve the portions of resolution number 25-064 and ordinance number 9.314.1 on second reading, which are not in conflict with the town's service model plan and section 13.08.140 of the Parker Land Development Ordinance, which approval is subject to the applicant providing to the town attorney's office with revised, second amended and restated service plan for the Cherry Creek South Metropolitan District Number 9 and First Amendment to amended and restated intergovernmental agreement by and between the Town of Parker and Cherry Creek South Metropolitan District Number 9 that removes the conflicting amendments and the town attorney's office. Upon review of such revised drafts, determines that the conflicting provisions have been removed. And upon such determination, the revised, second amended and restated service plan for the Cherry Creek South Metropolitan District Number 9 and First Amendment to amended and restated intergovernmental agreement by and between the Town of Parker and Cherry Creek South Metropolitan District Number 9 will be deemed approved.
Thank you. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion from Dyak and a second from Barrington. Hendricks, how do you vote?
Yes.
Barrington?
Yes.
Wilks?
Aye.
Dyak?
Yeah.
Franzen?
Yes.
And Hefta?
Yes.
And that also passes unanimously. Next up, in front of you, counsel, items 5A13 and 14, resolution number 25-065 and ordinance number 9.315.1 on second reading.
I move to approve the portions of resolution number 25-065 and ordinance 9.315.1 on second reading, which are not in conflict with the town's service model plan and section 13.08.140 of the Parker Land Development Ordinance, which approval is subject to the applicant providing the town attorney's office with revised, second amendment and restated service plan for Cherry Creek South Metropolitan District Number 10 and First Amendment to amended and restated intergovernmental agreement by and between the Town of Parker and the Cherry Creek South Metropolitan District Number 10 that removes the conflicting amendments and the town attorney's office. Upon review of the revised drafts, determines that the conflicting provisions have been removed. Upon such determination, the revised, second amended and restated service plan for Cherry Creek South Metropolitan District Number 10 and First Amendment to amended and restated intergovernmental agreement by and between the Town of Parker and Cherry Creek South Metropolitan District Number 10 will be deemed approved.
Thank you. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
A motion from Dyak and a second from Hefta. Hendricks, how do you vote?
Yes.
Barrington?
Yes.
Wilks?
Aye.
Dyak?
Yes.
Franzen?
Yes.
And Hefta?
Yes.
That also passes unanimously. Next up, in front of you, counsel, items 5A15 and 16, resolution number 25-066 and ordinance number 9.316.1 on second reading.
I move to approve the portions of resolution number 25-066 and ordinance number 9.316.1 on second reading, which are not in conflict with the town's service model plan and section 13.08.140 of the Parker Land Development Ordinance, which approval is subject to the applicant providing the town attorney's office with a revised, second amended and restated service plan for Cherry Creek South Metropolitan District Number 11 and First Amendment to amended and restated intergovernmental agreement by and between the Town of Parker and Cherry Creek South Metropolitan District Number 11 that removes the conflicting amendments and the town attorney's office. Upon review of the revised drafts, determines that the conflicting provisions have been removed. Upon such determination, the revised, second amended and restated service plan for the Cherry Creek South Metropolitan District Number 11 and First Amendment to amended and restated intergovernmental agreement by and between the Town of Parker and Cherry Creek South Metropolitan District Number 11 will be deemed approved.
Thank you. I would entertain a second.
Anyone? I'll second.
I have a motion from Dyak and a second from Barrington. Hendricks, how do you vote?
Yes.
Barrington?
Yes.
Wilks?
Aye.
Dyak?
Yeah.
Franzen?
Yes.
And Hefta?
Yes.
And that passes unanimously. Thank you very much, counsel, for that. Next up, in front of you, is item 5B, Com Park Business Campus Metropolitan District. It's the attorney show this evening. Jamie, take it away.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and counsel. Before you tonight, we do have two items under the Com Park Business Campus Metropolitan District, resolution number 25-058, a resolution to approve the service plan for the Com Park Business Campus Metropolitan District, and ordinance number 9.132.2 on second reading, a bill for an ordinance to approve the amended and restated intergovernmental agreement by and between the Town of Parker and Com Park Business Campus Metropolitan District. This is a slightly unique item to come before counsel, but a lot shorter and easier than the last one. So Com Park Business Campus Metropolitan District was created under Douglas County's jurisdiction before portions of that metropolitan district came into the Town of Parker. Once it came into the Town of Parker, the Town of Parker had a provision put on the metropolitan district that if they ever sought an amendment to their Douglas County service plan, the amendment would need to come into compliance with the town's model service plan at that time. Douglas County, the metropolitan district is seeking an amendment through Douglas County for that service plan. But for the portions of the metropolitan district that are within the Town of Parker, they are looking to amend their intergovernmental agreement and adopt a service plan through a resolution, but under the contractual obligations of the intergovernmental agreement to apply the town's model service plan provisions to the property that is within the Town of Parker. So Douglas County would still have jurisdiction and their service plan on the sections of the property that are outside the town boundaries. And we would have them complying with our model service plan through contractual agreements on the provisions that are within. So the draft IGA that was submitted and the draft model service plan, while not a technical, legally enforceable service plan of its own, will be enforceable through the intergovernmental agreement. And Ms. Crawford is here to add anything that I may have forgotten from the town's perspective for this one. But I really think that's mostly it in a nutshell.
Thank you, Ms. Crawford. Anything identified that Jamie missed? All right. Counsel, any questions for town attorney? None. Do we see any questions down here? None. Do we have an applicant tonight?
We do have an applicant here to provide any additional information.
Excellent. Please come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, counsel. My name is Audrey Johnson, and I live at 1140 Twin Peak Circle in Longmont, Colorado, 80503. And tonight, I represent the Com Park Business Campus Metropolitan District. It's quite a nameful. And we don't have a presentation for you tonight, but we do, we are here available to answer any questions.
Thank you very much.
For she, sorry, we didn't open the public hearing. I've been focused on these items that, thank goodness, for our town clerk. At 8:30.
I would like to open the public hearing at 8:30, please. If you would, just for a second. Counsel, any questions for the applicant? Seeing none, we'll close public comment, or public hearing at 8:33 and move on, open public, oh, la, la. I would like to, thank you. It's a tongue-tied night. I would like to open it up for public comment at 8:33. Is there any member from the public wishing to address counsel on this item? Seeing none, we'll close public comment at 8:33, and counsel, come back for comments or debate. Mr. Hendricks, anything to add?
Just basic, I guess, compliance seems like a pretty simple ask, so I'm in favor.
Thank you. Ms. Barrington?
Yep. I think it's designed to mirror our model and maintain consistency. So I'm with you.
Thank you. Ms. Wilks?
No comments, thank you.
Mr. Dyak?
Good, thanks.
Mr. Franzen?
No comments.
And Ms. Hefta?
No comment.
Thank you. With that, I would entertain a motion on resolution number 25-058, please.
I move to approve resolution number 25-058.
Second.
I have a motion from Wilks.
Oh, do I do on both?
No, this is separate.
Okay.
I have a motion from Wilks and a second from Hendricks. Hendricks, how do you vote?
Yes.
Barrington?
Town clerks, I believe you closed the public hearing, but okay.
8:33. Barrington, how do you vote?
Yes.
Wilks?
Aye.
Dyak?
Yes.
Franzen?
Yes.
And Hefta?
Yes.
Next, I would entertain, I'm sorry, let the record state that pass unanimously. Next, I would entertain a motion on item 5B2, Next, I would entertain a motion on item 5B2, ordinance number 9.132.2 on second reading.
I move to approve ordinance number 9.132.2 on second reading.
Second.
I have a motion from Wilks and a second from Hefta. Hendricks, how do you vote?
Yes.
Barrington?
Yes.
Wilks?
Hi.
Dyak?
Yes.
Franzen?
Yes.
And Hefta?
Yes.
And that passes unanimously. That concludes public hearings. Moving on to items six on your, on your agenda, ordinances. First in front of you is item number 6A, Mottson-Bacher Road Property Annexation. Town of Parker. Yay.
You're very excited.
It's Amber Woodhicken and Mr. Hudson.
Good evening, mayor and town council. Before you this evening is the Mottson-Bacher Road Property Annexation. The applicant, the Town of Parker, is proposing the annexation of right-of-way acquired by the town for the Dransfeld Road extension. The property is located west of the intersection of Todd Drive and Mottson-Bacher Road. On August 4th, 2025, the Town, the Town Council approved Resolution Number 25-046 and set the public meeting date for tonight, September 15th. In 2024, the Town of Parker acquired the subject land for right-of-way to be used for the planned extension of Dransfeld Road over Cherry Creek to a new Mottson-Bacher Road and Todd Drive intersection. The right-of-way parcels are located west of the intersection and are outside of the town boundary in unincorporated Douglas County. The proposed annexation will bring the Mottson, the full Mottson-Bacher Road right-of-way into the town, south from the intersection to Longland Parkway in the Salisbury Heights neighborhood, and clarify municipal boundaries and maintenance responsibilities. The subject land is eligible for annexation because it is owned by the town, has contiguity with the town boundary, is located within the municipal planning area or urban growth boundary, and is identified as a candidate for future annexation in the adopted three-mile plan and Parker 2035 master plan. It is also part of an enclave located in unincorporated Douglas County that has been surrounded by the town for greater than three years. On August 4th, 2025, Town Council approves Resolution Number 25-046 and set the public meeting date for this evening. On September 2nd, the Town Council held the first reading for ordinance 2.287. Tonight's hearing is to consider the eligibility of the subject property described in the annexation petition to be annexed into the town as provided by state law. The Town Council will also consider the standards for review in support of an annexation determination found in the municipal code and the town charter. The Town Council has the final decision-making authority for the submitted annexation petition as annexation is a legislative act. Staff has reviewed the proposal against the town and state requirements for annexation and has determined that the minimum standards have been met and the public notice requirements have been satisfied. Therefore, staff recommends that Town Council approve the Mottson-Bacher Road Property Annexation. This concludes staff's report. We are happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. And for the record, that presentation includes resolution and ordinance on this item, correct?
Correct.
Thank you. With that, do we have questions for staff? Start over here. Hefta?
Is there any particular, that looks like there's no financial impact on this matter to acquiring this and annexing this in?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Franzen?
No questions.
Mr. Dyak?
I have nothing.
Wilks?
No questions, thank you.
Barrington?
No questions.
And Hendricks?
No question.
All right, with that, we'll open public comment, glasses on, at 8:38 PM. If there's any member of the public wishing to address counsel on this specific item, please make yourself known. Seeing no public stepping forward, we'll close public comment at 8:38 and go back to counsel for comments. Mr. Hendricks, anything to add?
Considering this includes Todd Drive, I'm in support.
We're done, right?
It feels like a housekeeping item at this point, so I think it's important, but I'm supportive.
Thank you. Ms. Wilks?
Yeah, the fact that this is town-owned land that we're just annexing in, I mean, it's just kind of crystal clear, and I appreciate you guys tying up all the loose ends, so thank you.
Mr. Dyak?
Is that your only reason, Todd, for supporting this thing?
Go Todd.
Back your thing up. Okay.
Mr. Franzen?
I also support because it's Todd. That's, no, good, good, good presentation. Thanks for the cleanup.
And Ms. Hefta?
This just makes sense, and also I can tell you, I drive this every day, and so this really is common sense. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, counsel would entertain a motion on Resolution Number 25-050, please.
I move to approve Resolution Number 25-050.
Thank you. I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion from Hefta and a second from Hendricks. Hendricks, how do you vote?
Yes.
Barrington?
Yes.
Wilks?
Hi.
Dyak?
Yes.
Franzen?
Yes.
And Hefta?
Yes.
And that passes unanimously. Next up in front of you, ordinance, I'm sorry, I would entertain a motion on ordinance number 2.287 on second reading.
I move to approve ordinance number 2.287 on second reading.
Second.
I have a motion from Hendricks and a second from Hefta. Hendricks, how do you vote?
Yes.
Barrington?
Yes.
Wilks?
Hi.
Hefta, or Dyak?
Yes.
Franzen?
Yes.
And Hefta?
Yes.
And that also passes unanimously. Next up in front of you, item 6B, ordinance number 1.662 on second reading, a bill for an ordinance approving a grant agreement for the senior, senior center improvements by and between the Town of Parker and the Parker Senior Center Incorporated. I'm sorry, pause. I neglected to read in the resolution and the ordinance to the record. I simply read the, item 6A, I read 6A, but I did not read into the record items 6A1 and 6A2.
I love when you make them.
They were okay. Okay.
I mean, it was listed on the agenda, so we should be fine.
Okay. So let the record show that it's listed on the agenda. Thank you very much. So I'm sorry, back to item 6B, ordinance number 1.662 on second reading, a bill for an ordinance approving the grant agreement for the senior center improvements by and between the Town of Parker and the Parker Senior Center. Presenting today, Ms. Mary Colton and a very patient Mr. Rich Forrester.
No. How does that sound? I've had a lot of microphone action today, so. Okay, so some background information for you. At the May 12 study session, senior center representatives Rich Forrester and Leslie Sell presented an update to Town Council that included a formal request for an additional $45,000 to address some urgent repairs that they were in need of addressing. The request was in addition to the town's annual operational support of $80,000. They indicated a lack of their own financial resources to address these urgent facility needs. Those, those urgent repairs, excuse me, included drainage issues that have contributed to water intrusion, sinking in uneven basement floors requiring lifting and stabilization, and significant deterioration of the parking lot that requires resurfacing. Following that study session update, staff and council met at the June 9 study session where you all expressed support for the funding requests and indicating the public benefit of the center and also the critical nature of the repairs. So town staff in coordination with our legal team, senior center representatives, developed a grant agreement that outlined the scope of work, procurement, and contracting guidelines, required insurance coverage, and a completion of repairs deadline of June 30th, 2026. The town contingency funds would, will be used to cover the cost of these repairs. We worked with finance to identify those, that funding source. And next slide, please. So with that, staff recommends approval of ordinance number 1.662 on second reading, which is a bill for an ordinance approving the grant agreement for senior center improvements by and between the Town of Parker and the Parker Senior Center.
Thank you, Mary, very, very much.
Questions? Thank you.
Counsel, questions on this item? Questions, please. Mr. Hendricks?
This building, can you, do you know how old this building is?
I know that it dates back to the 1990s, so it's, it's an aging facility, for sure.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Ms. Barrington, any questions for Mary?
No questions.
Ms. Wilks, any questions?
No questions, thank you.
Mr. Dyak?
I have no questions.
Mr. Franzen, any questions?
Do we have an idea of what some of the long-term maintenance is? I know we, we outlined, this, this will address some of the long-term maintenance challenges, but do we have any sort of broader idea of what they'll be longer term further out?
Yeah, so I think that the feasibility study will address a lot of that, as there will be a facility assessment as part of that feasibility study. So I think that will give us all, you know, a better lens to look through in terms of what the long-range plan is for maintaining that facility that is aging. I know that members of the senior center did put together their long-range plan and identified some of those repairs as well, so they have a pretty good idea of, you know, where things stand from a repair standpoint. But these three repairs happen to be more urgent in nature, and those are what need to be addressed immediately, so. But I think that study will give us a lot more insight once completed.
And that feasibility study is, when do we expect to get that?
So we expect that to begin, the consultant will, will begin work in October and, and conclude in April or May of 2026, so about a six-month process.
And are there, are there any, I guess, without that, is it your opinion that there are potentially other items that may need attention next year as well?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay.
I'm not aware of any other issues at this time.
Thanks, Mary.
Thank you.
Ms. Hefta, any questions?
Yes, Mary. So if we don't address the drainage issues and the sinking in uneven floor basement, and that could pose some code violations, could that not, building code?
Possibly.
Yep. And if we don't address the parking lot issues that need resurfacing, that could, that could incur some liability issues with some folks slipping and falling in the parking lot due to uneven surfaces and unpaved parking lot cracks.
That's correct. And I think these, these facility needs, these urgent, the nature of these facility needs are in part due to deferred maintenance, so probably things that would have been helpful to address at some earlier point in time, but the funding is the issue. And so now is the time to get these, these repairs addressed.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
Thank you. With no further questions, we will open up public comment at 8:46 PM. If there's a member of the public that wishes to address this counsel on this item, please step forward. Seeing nobody from the public, close public comment at 8:47 PM and go back for comments. Mr. Liaison, Mr. Hendricks, sir?
Yeah, the building definitely need, the facility in general needs a lot of improvements and for the safety of the seniors and visitors, I'm in support.
Ms. Barrington?
Yep, definitely not glamorous repairs, but they, they need to be made just for the safety and accessibility, so I'm glad we could come up with some funding.
Ms. Wilks?
You know, I hate the name Senior Center because most of the people there can run circles around me, so I'm excited that we've got an opportunity to help keep this building going and hopefully for another, you know, 40 years and do what we can to help, I don't even know the word, would, since most of you appear qualified, is that, what word would you like to be called? I said most, I said most.
AARP cardholders, please.
No, I think it's awesome, and I'm, I'm really glad that we were able to collaborate on this. It's wonderful, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dyak, sir.
Thanks. As Councilmember Franzen indicated, we're going to do a greater study to kind of determine how we, how we can take care of our senior community going forward. You know, this has been around for a number of, number of decades. I've had many interactions there with, with many people who have, who've helped this, this center over the years. You know, I think we have a duty to kind of figure out how we can maybe optimize the, the senior interaction here within Parker and looking forward to that, that study.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Franzen?
Yeah, I think these are, you know, necessary needs and improvements. I know we've been talking about this for a while, and I'm glad we were able to find some money to help with, with this. I think the, the feasibility study that we have coming is going to be a great thing to help, I guess, further keep the senior center running, I think is, is the general plan and definitely needed, needed amenity for our residents.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Hefta?
To address Councilmember Wilks a little bit, yes, all, all folks in Parker over 55, in particular, would be considered seniors, and there's levels of seniors, I think, as you age up, so I know I'm in that category. Most of y'all are too. And although you don't look it, you don't look it. So we, we have to balance spending the taxpayer dollars, and in this particular situation, we do have to spend money to keep this going. Again, the senior community is open to the community of anyone older than, I could be wrong, 50 or 55, some, is it 55? 50, okay, so y'all qualify down there. And so, anyone can come in, and I think people from either other communities come as well. So this is a true gem and a resource for Parker, and they have wonderful activities to join in, and they provide lots of services, and it's a place of connection and community in Parker. So we have to balance the taxpayer dollars, we have to work on providing those necessary repairs to this building because this is a true service for our, our seniors.
Thank you, Laura. With that, I would entertain a motion on ordinance number 1.662 on second reading.
I move to approve ordinance number 1.662 on second reading.
Second.
I have a motion from Wilks and a second from, from Hendricks. Hendricks, how do you vote?
Yes.
Barrington?
Yes.
Wilks?
I would like to say I didn't like the word senior, but I.
And Mr. Dyak?
Yes.
Ms. Franzen?
Yes.
Mr. Franzen, Jesus.
And yes, I'm okay with being called senior.
Ms. Hefta?
I'm okay with being called senior, yes.
All right, that passes unanimously. Counsel, next up in front of you, contracts over 500,000. Item 7A, Parker Road Sidewalks East Gaps, Pine Drive to Stroh, CIP 23-042. Mr. Hendricks is presenting this evening.
Mr. Who?
Mr.
Mr. Hendricks is?
Todd? Todd, you present? Sidewalks are important, and unfortunately, no.
This is senior Chris presenting tonight.
Pass my baton. I've got some issues up here.
A little background on the project that Josh just talked about, the city mayor and council. This project will construct a 10-foot-wide multi-use sidewalk trail on the east side of Parker Road from Pine Drive, which is the north limit. There's two gaps, and it goes to south of Stroh Road. I'm going to show a vicinity map in a minute. Project also includes two pedestrian bridges and some retaining walls, and all, we're going to build about seven tenths of a mile of multi-use trail along Parker Road. Seventy-two percent of the direct construction cost are reimbursable via a combination of state and federal funds. This funding arrangement was approved back in January of 2024 via the ordinance listed above. Two segments, one just south of Pine Drive, it goes through what I call the slack and open space, goes south and ties into existing sidewalks that was built by the Pine Bluffs Development. And then the next segment is actually along the Robinson Ranch Residential Development, north and south of J. Morgan, cutting into existing sidewalks that were constructed to the north by the Big Toolbox and the Rialto Ridge subdivision to the south. This project will, it's a big milestone here in the town because we have been working for 20 years to build sidewalk trails along Parker Road. This will basically finish a gap, which will now have sidewalk along Parker Road from Cottonwood Drive on one side or the other, all the way to Stroh Road when this is built. Big milestone, 20 years ago, Town Council pushed to start this process. This is a multi-year, we're not done, but this is a big milestone for this, for this sidewalk along Parker Road. So on September 4th, we opened bids. We received responses from 10 contractors that were responsive. The lowest bid that was responsive was from Hammond Infrastructure, 3.7 to $1 million. The bids ranged from the 3 million, from 3.7 million from Hammond all the way up to 5.6 million. Engineer's estimate was 5.1 million. If you apply the reimbursement rate, we're looking at approximately 2.6 million in federal and state funds in this. Hammond Infrastructure is currently under contract doing the Lincoln-Jordan widening project, and they've successfully completed several of their town public works projects. Most recently was Cottonwood Drive widening in 2020, in 2021, but they've also done Chambers Road widening, multiple projects they've done in the Town of Parker over the last 25 years. Therefore, town staff recommends moving forward this contract to award. One thing I need to point out here is we have not officially received the CDOT concurrence to award yet. We're meeting, doing this tonight because if there's a deadline with the federal funds, kind of like the EV money, we have to get this thing under contract by the end of February, end of September. So we're moving forward tonight with the intent that we expect to get the CDOT concurrence in a few days and get this thing fully executed by the end of the month to take advantage of these funding sources. And with that, I'll answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Laura, questions, please?
On that last part, Chris, while that might be a little bit unusual for them, the CDOT to not concur just yet, it would not be out of the ordinary for us to go forward on this vote tonight, and can you just briefly explain why?
Yeah, so we've done this once before. The CDOT process, it takes time for them to go through all the steps, and the town government is a lot more nimble and fast compared to the state of Colorado when it comes to awarding these contracts. I want to take advantage of these federal funds. It's 1.1, I think it's 1.1 million in federal funds that we can give on this to take advantage of that, so it's important that we move forward. Otherwise, if we wait till October for everything to perfectly line up, we're going to miss this opportunity for these funds.
Thank you.
Mr. Franzen?
And I guess moving forward with this, our, our approval, if that's the way we go, is contingent on receiving those funds, so we are not fully obligated unless we get the CDOT funds. Is that correct?
Correct. The award will be held until we receive the official CDOT concurrence to award.
Perfect, thank you.
Mr. Dyak?
Is this Dr. Cog tip money or set aside?
It's Dr. Cog, came through the tip process.
Tip, okay, yeah. Yeah, I, I guess if we don't, it's not a question, more of a statement, follow-up. If, if, if we don't get this under contract by, by the date, then we go into a delay, which then we have to go to Dr. Cog and sort of, kind of explain what the, what the holdups were, so it's just kind of better to take care of it now. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Wilks, questions?
So with the $2 million difference between the lowest bid and the highest bid, are we worried about change orders or it being underbid? That's a big gap.
If you look at the, the lowest three, there was three bids that were really tight, so I, I'm not worried about being change ordered on this because there was a grouping of contractors right at the bottom, I say bottom, that comes out wrong, but they were lowest, and they were all, one of the top three were, was F&amp;F, was doing Stroh Road right there. So very reputable contractors, we've worked with Hammond before, I'm not concerned. More than normal contracting would be grandy.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Ms. Barrington?
I don't have any questions, thank you.
Mr. Hendricks?
I know we usually get like five or six bids, but are you, I'm a little surprised we got 10 of these.
This is speculation on my part, but to see 10 bids, a year ago, we bid another segment, sulfur gulch, we got three. In my opinion, the market is a bit tightening as far as what's out there for people to bid, so to get 10 bids was surprising to me, Todd. I was expecting about half of that based on other bids we've gotten, so it was a very competitive pool of bidders that we got on this one. So it's good to see that, it's good for the town to see those types of bid results.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. With the further questions, we'll open up public comment at 8:59 PM. If there's any member of the public wishing to address counsel on this specific item, make yourself known. Seeing none, we'll close public comment at 8:59 and move back for comments from, from council. Mr. Hendricks, anything?
You know, it's, it's great to great, it's great to get multiple bids, and it's also great to have these infrastructure projects with funding from different sources outside of the town. So this is a win-win, and I am in approval.
Ms. Barrington?
Yeah, I, I'm leveraging state and federal funds is, is great, and I'm, I'm excited we got 10 bids. So I'm for this. I think I'm, everybody's a little brain dead.
Ms. Wilks?
Yeah, the fact that we've worked with Hammond before, and so they are a reputable company that we do have a past history with, I would agree that, you know, it's not too much of a yellow flag or a red flag that it came in lower than the highest bid. So I appreciate the work being done with that. I think it speaks very highly of how much contractors want to work with us when we did have 10 bids come back for this. So that's a tribute to your team and all of the work that you guys do. So thank you.
Mr. Dyak?
Anytime we can get people's money to come into Parker and pay for our capital improvements, I think that's a good, a good thing.
Well, it's our money, it's just kind of home. Sorry. Mr. Franzen?
So just a, a point to, I guess, point, a point to point out, cottonwood to Stroh, like full sidewalks, that's incredible. Like, congratulations, that is really exciting.
Just on one side.
Well, you can still get there.
You can get there, and that's, that's important. I think that was a goal of town council from 20 years ago. They wanted to get this built along Parker Road, and we've been leveraging CDOT, whether that be state or federal funds on almost all those projects since I've been here.
That's great. I'm its part.
Ms. Hefta?
Yeah, with the, unfortunately, with the, the safety issues that we do have today in, across America, these, these sidewalks really contribute to keeping people safe. And you don't have to walk along the side of the road, you can walk on the sidewalk. And that really does a lot to keep people safe, especially in today's days of erratic driving, not only in Colorado, but across the nation. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, council, I'd entertain a motion.
I move to approve the staff recommendation as part of the regular agenda, contingent upon receipt of the concurrence to award from CDOT.
And a motion, do you have a second?
Second.
And a motion from Franzen, a second from Hendricks. Hendricks, how do you vote?
Yes.
Barrington?
Yes.
Wilks?
Aye.
Dyak?
Yes.
Franzen?
Yes.
Hefta?
Yes.
And that passes unanimously. Last up in front of us, item 7B, Cottonwood Storm, Phase 1, CIP 24-020. And Mr. Grabcheck is presenting.
Wonderful. Good evening or good night, Mayor and council members. This presentation here is for a contract over $5,000 for improvements to a water quality facility located on the southeast intersection of Cottonwood Drive and Parker Road. Just a little bit of a background, our goals with this project are to retrofit this water quality only pond, and I'll kind of go into a little bit later what makes it a water quality only pond. But we're just looking to update a few of the structures to conform with current standards and also increase the maintainability. There is also an undermined structure that we are looking to replace with a better solution. Additionally, this is a P3 funded project through the Cottonwood Commercial Area Urban Renewal District. So here's a quick project vicinity map. You can see the yellow highlight on the southeast corner of Parker Road and Cottonwood Drive. That's where the water quality pond is. So this pond fills up in most storm events. It slows down the frequent storm water that is kind of increased by pavement. Flood prevention for this Cottonwood Commercial Area is provided by the two blue ponds over on the east side of E470 there, much larger regional ponds. So here's a more zoomed in site map. So the pond I'm talking about is the one right next to the Raising Canes and behind the Mattress Firm. This is a water quality pond that fills up and then spills over a grouted boulder or, or grouted riprap spillway. The spillway is what is currently undermined and that we're kind of looking to address with this project, highlighted right here. So bids were opened on August 21. We received seven. Unfortunately, we didn't get a full 10, but we got seven bids. The lowest responsible bidder was HCG Construction at 515,000. HCG Construction has done work here in the town recently down on Crowfoot Valley Road. That contract went pretty well. We were happy with the work that they did. So that's good. The bids ranged from 515,000 to 730,000, and the bid was just a bit under the engineer's estimate at 560,000. Once again, it's a P3 funded project through the Cottonwood Commercial District. Pretty much like I just kind of summarized, and if approved, construction is scheduled for the fall or winter and should be substantially complete here before the spring of '26. So staff recommends approval of the awarding of the contract. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions for staff? Laura?
Just a general question, if you bear with me. How important is addressing failing stormwater infrastructure within a town?
It can be, I would say extremely important. I think it's just like with any infrastructure, you want to use your dollars wisely and kind of really focus on the items that are going to cause either the most damage or be the most cost-effective to repair.
What are some of the consequences of failing to address it?
Yeah, so like with most deferred maintenance, we're going to end up spending more later down the road in either disaster cleanup from flooding events or infrastructure failing like over at Bradbury Ranch Drive. It's much, much cheaper to get ahead of the break, I would say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Franzen, questions?
So there was, there was something mentioned in the presentation, but not necessarily in the packet, that there's some aesthetic improvement happening. Is that, what, what does that mean?
So the aesthetic portion, and I guess this is somewhat, uh...
It's a technical term, muck.
Yes, right. So there's cattails along the swale that's coming in along Cottonwood, Cottonwood Drive, and then there's the big grouted boulder structure. We're going to be getting rid of the big grouted boulder structure, and there's just going to be more of the inlet standard type structure, kind of where the existing head wall is. So we're taking a lot of like concrete out of the pond, and then the way it's currently designed, it really fills up the bottom with kind of a lot of sediment and muck, and you could kind of see on the, this slide here, it'll, that won't happen as frequently essentially. We're going to be cleaning it out in a larger four bay closer to our access point. So it won't be killing the grass hopefully as much, maybe kind of bring a little bit better look to the bottom of the pond, too.
Perfect. Thank you.
Mr. Dyak, questions?
Nope, I'm good. Thank you.
Ms. Wilks, questions?
Nope.
Ms. Barrington, questions?
No questions, thank you.
And Mr. Hendricks? None. Seeing, we'll open up public comment at 9:07 PM. Any member of the public wishing to address counsel on this item? Seeing none, close public comment at 9:07 PM and go back for comments. Mr. Hendricks?
I'm in support.
Ms. Barrington?
I am supportive, too. And this is the, this is like, I was going to say another unglamorous project, but Josh thinks it's very, I'm supportive, thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Wilks?
Fun fact, don't try to eat a cottontail. They are not what they look like. Oh, I was stupid as a kid. But I, I love that the cottontails are there, and I love that we're making it aesthetically pleasing and handling, what was the technical word? Muck?
Muck.
Yes, handling the muck. So thank you for that. I'll tell you later.
Mr. Dyak?
Yeah, no, I mean, this is good stuff. I mean, it's, if you continue to, continue to take care of these things, especially with, with assistance from the Urban Renewal District, I think that's great. We're, we're getting money from the Urban Renewal District, right? Yeah.
Hundred percent.
You know, it's, it's 9:08. It's, I'm sorry. I, I know that. I just needed that. Thank you.
Mr. Franzen?
This is pretty standard. I like that HCG Construction, we have experience with them. Contract came in under what our bid was, I guess, underappropriated. So that's, uh, that's all good. Thank you.
And Ms. Hefta?
Yeah, I'm going to go with the PPP, prior planning prevents poor performance. And I think in, in Parker, that's what we try to do. We try to get ahead of the issues that could come before us from a structure and infrastructure perspective. So while this may not be exciting, and it's rather dry, it's just very necessary to get ahead of these issues so we don't have disasters later on. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, I would entertain a motion.
I move to approve the staff recommendation as part of the regular agenda.
Second?
I have a motion from Wilks and a second from Hefta. Hendricks, how do you vote?
Yes.
Barrington?
Yes.
Wilks?
Aye.
Dyak?
Yes.
Franzen?
Yes.
And Hefta?
Yes.
And that passes unanimously. And before we go, I neglected during my, my update to speak of one, Mr. Michael Grabcheck, who presented at the Cherry Creek Watershed and talked a lot about muck. But it was a fascinating presentation. I just want to say thank you personally. I didn't realize you were going to be here tonight. I should have looked at that. But thank you. That was a great presentation, and I was proud to sit there as a Parkerite and have you present. So thanks for that, bud.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
And we are adjourned.